Town hall meeting. And there's two issues that we wanted to address today. Uh, one was gonna be the discussion in regards to animal control within the city. And the second issue that we wanted to discuss was in regards to the city of Rio Grande City dog kennel. Obviously during uh some time back, we have heard a lot of uh voices from the community. And they have indicated that they have some issues with our animal control and also some issues in regards to the dog kennel that we currently have. We have been addressing several of the issues that have been raised by the community. But at this time, we wanted to hear from the public uh to listen to what ideas they have. What were their concerns and how this commission could better address all the needs of every citizen? And this is one of them that we had indicated that we were gonna be addressing. And there's some, some things that we wanna share with you so that you know what is it that the city along with the commission is being proactive within uh uh this issue. So at this time, if anybody wants to come over to the podium, uh you're more than welcome to come over and share some of your concerns and then we'll have a presentation in a minute. Good afternoon, ma'am. Today we don't have our secretary, so it's gonna be, I'm gonna be addressing every public speaker that wants to come forth. Uh, your name, ma'am?
Good afternoon, mayor. Good afternoon, or good evening, uh commissioners. My name is Cynthia Bustamante. I am a, a citizen of Rio Grande City, Texas, and also I am a foster. Uh, when I say foster means um we take care of dogs. We take care of dogs that are abused, surrendered, malnourished, abandoned, and uh you name it, we try to do it. Okay, um, there's a lot of issues that uh we would like to talk about because it's just overwhelming. And we feel that uh we're, we're not getting any type of help, you know? Most of the time, um, the monies that uh that we invest in animals are arming with vaccines, with a transfer taken into the doctor, with uh uh buying preventives, you know? And, and that's a lot, that's a lot, that takes out of our money. And most of the times, you know, we find ourselves fundraising, you know, for, for things like this that we need. Um, in the past, we have, they have told us that, yes, we have uh a shelter that was going to be expanded. In the past, they've told us that uh they were going to offer one hundred vouchers for dogs and cats uh to be spayed and neutered for the community. Well, the year has passed and the years have passed and nothing was done, you know?
Was there ever a, a town hall, town hall meeting that you were able to examine?
No, no.
Where you could address the commission and the mayor's as well today?
No, no, there was never, it was just word of mouth that it was going to happen. Um, now I hear that um that the building that was going to be used, it's no longer a use, it's gonna be changed to something else. It's just like, it's, they, they come up with, with uh proposals and stuff, but it's, it never happens.
What building are you referring to, ma'am?
Uh, I think it's the, the one on, on the, the Sol Street, the, the Kaiser.
Yes, yes.
And uh it never has happened and I think that the community needs help.
Yes.
You know, awareness, education, you know, um, I don't know, with uh maybe billboards, you know, uh talking about spaying and neutering their dogs. Uh, education, getting somebody out there at the schools and, and the school district and teaching our young kids, our, our generations that are coming up, you know? What is the responsibility of take, of having a pet? Yeah, everybody likes a pet, everybody likes little, nice, furry pets where they're little. But when they have diseases, when they have medical problems, you know, what do they do? And most of the times you see these dogs abandoned out there in the road. And there's a lot of people here that foster dogs, you know, and they can tell you different parts of the city where they live and they just abandon them. And they have a heart, just like you have a heart, but our hearts seems like we're a little bit bigger because, you know, we love animals. I'm sure that you all love animals too, and they take it to their heart, to their homes, you know? And sometimes it's just overwhelming for their family to take care of them and for, you know, it, it's just becoming a problem that we need help. We just desperately need help with this.
And Ms. Bustamante, just so that she can realize, we're trying to be as active and as involved as we can with the community. And I think that this is the first step that this commission is taking to address the needs of every citizen. I can represent to you that you're correct. Uh, the plans are uh to abandon the building that was proposed to be a shelter and then uh uh use another building that we think it's gonna be more suitable for that. If you refer to the building on, is it Abasolo?
Abasolo, yes.
Is it Abasolo? You can, you can pass by there and see that there's hardly any parking there. So parking was gonna be an issue there and it's mainly an enclosed warehouse. We have another facility, another piece of property, uh which is uh on, what's the name of it?
The Water District on Calle U F C and eighty-three.
Are, are we gonna be having a lot more kennels out there?
Yes.
You know, uh because that's the problem. Every time that we call the dog shelter, they're full, they're full.
I can represent this to you, ma'am, that there was not necessarily a budget uh to work on that particular project. And at this current moment, we have allocated uh close to, to three hundred thousand to renovate that particular piece of property and to try to bring more kennels, to try to address as much as we can. Obviously, it's gonna take a lot of manpower and we're asking and inviting the community and individuals like yourself who are passionate and willing to help and you were talking about the school and education. We don't have control over the school district, but what we have control over is the public library. The public library has a lot of access to a lot of citizens, a lot of young kids that, especially during the summer, they have. I was not aware of this, but I started visiting the library and they had thousands of people literally going to our public library. So if any of the community members were interested in participating in the education, uh and they wanna offer their time, uh, we could definitely try to work something out with the, with the library where there could be a class where the city can sponsor it and try to spread some, some of the knowledge and wealth of education that you have regarding this issue so that we can start working collectively and addressing the issues that we currently have. But I can tell you that this is the first step that we're having formally where you can actually address the commissioners, the mayor, the city manager, and everybody so that we can try to address these issues. And this is not word of mouth where we bump into each other at HEB or uh our favorite restaurant, but it's here within the city hall. And this is a formal meeting where we're trying to address the needs of, of our concerned citizens like, like yourself.
Okay, uh one other thing, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that um the timeline, you know? When are you thinking of offering services like, for example, it's kind of funny when you hear Wachita, Macallan, FAR, you know, offering services to people to bring their dogs and cats to be spayed and neutered, you know? They offer things like that, you know? Why can't we do the same? You know, I mean, we have to have services where we, they, the people can get their rabies shots, they can get spayed and neutered. Like I said, you know, one hundred, uh, we were told one hundred vouchers were going to be passed out, that whatever.
Let me, let me ask you this, ma'am. How often do you think that, that this event should take place? Uh, would you say once a month, every two months, every quarter, through the year? Uh, what, what would be your suggestion? You're saying, okay, they have this particular program in some of the other counties and other cities. What would be, in your mind, the ideal timing?
In my opinion,
Yes.
since it is kinda expensive for the standard, I think, you know, twice a year. And as far as, you know, the, the offering rabies shot at a discount or maybe free or in any other type of vaccines, I, I'm saying maybe, you know, twice to three times a year would be good and beneficial for everybody. Now, a lot of times what has happened is, you know, this is only for the residents in Rio Grande City. But how about the Ritz? How about Las Romas? You know, how about this other little uh surrounding subdivision down here? They, they cannot go to those types of, 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 of services because they're not from Rio Grande City. How are they helping us? We need a joint effort.
We're willing to work uh with every uh public entity, but once you start getting into the commission, I'm sorry, to the county, you would have to, not you, I'm sorry, we would have to talk to the commissioners, to the county commissioners to see if they're interested in it more. Yeah, to get on board, to try to assist us. Obviously, we're here for a reason, and the reason being that we wanna help every citizen here and our community in general. But you gotta also understand that we have to have the right balance in addressing this issue. We're not gonna be able to address it immediately, we're gonna be able to address it uh in the near future. And we're gonna set up, uh, obviously, if you're saying that twice a year would be ready, we're gonna start programming that to see. We need to start finding out how much is it gonna cost us, where are we gonna get the doctors to come over and help us in the facility? And the facility as well. Uh, but I can tell you that we're working on the issue, we're addressing it. And if you have some other concerns, obviously, let us know because those are great points. There's some, some of the issues that, that the commissioners are not well versed. You know, there's certain issues that, that some individuals have a lot of knowledge, some individuals do not. You know, some get exposed more so and obviously some don't, don't. Uh, and that's why we're having this interaction with the community members so that we can get informed as to uh addressing the issue and not only that, but also coming up with a solution, a solution that's sustainable to the community and to the city as well so that we can finally start having some kind of resolution afoot.
Well, I'm happy you're open minded. You know, we're going to anxiously, anxiously be waiting, you know, for that announcement for the spay and neuter, you know, and other services that the city might come up with. Uh, in the meantime, uh, we will continue doing what we do, you know, and um, and, and in hopes that, you know, you can help us out as much as you can whenever it's possible, you know, for this problem that we have here.
Okay, and, and if I hear you correctly, ma'am, I was, I'm, I'm taking notes, obviously, as, as, as you're providing your, your, your speech, ma'am. And from what I hear, three things that, that I can, three topics that you address, and obviously it's the spay, neuter, the vaccines, and also educating the community. So we could definitely start working on that. Uh, and as far as the education, like I said, we need well-informed individuals that can assist us. And we can make the library available uh for education that is easily accessible. We can program that with our library and have a session where it could be an educational session as to how to treat uh your dogs, your cats, your animals in general, so that they can have a more fruitful life and more pleasant life as well.
That's, that's, that's a good plan. I'm, I'm happy with that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Before, before you go, Cynthia, I just wanna say, thank you so much for what you do. First of all, thank you for coming and expressing your opinions. That's exactly why we want to have this town hall meeting. Because the mission of this new commission is to listen to you, to listen to your concerns. And we knew since day one that the animal control, what's that of control? We definitely knew it and, and that's why we decided to make it our first town hall meeting about this topic. Because this topic, uh, it's so sensitive that uh touches your heart, just like you said. Doing what you're doing, my hat off to you, honestly. Uh, I, I have no words to, to describe what, what you do and bringing with, uh, with your own money to help these, these uh animals. Believe me, we understand it and we'll do everything in our power and a little bit more just to help out. And just like the manager, uh, the mayor said, we can also uh send some letters and talk to the, to the county commissioners to see if we can do an integrated campaign to help out the whole counties. Rio Grande Cities within uh Stark County, right in the middle, from the inside and the west side. So I'm pretty sure the other cities like Romas, Cobares, uh, La Grulla, Tomo Linto, they have a similar problem. So if we can come up with something this huge that's gonna help hundreds or thousands of animals and volunteers like you, I don't see a denial on their part. So uh, thank you for sharing. That's exactly what we wanted to know, your ideas, your opinions. So you could know what this commission had uh decided to put into this new program, which are the three hundred thousand dollars. And maybe based on you all's responses and opinions, maybe, maybe in the first year, it's, it's not a, a good time to come up with a new building, but to invest everything on, on services before doing a, a building that, you know, you have a great idea. And that's why we wanna, today we cannot make any decision. This is not a, a, a formal meeting. This is just a town hall where uh nothing is formal. You, you come, you express your ideas, we listen, we have a conversation, nothing formal. And that's why we wanted to do it like this, so that you can feel good addressing your concerns and you can see it. You can see it that we wanna listen and, and this is not the first time we're gonna, we're gonna do it. We're gonna do another uh town hall meetings about, uh, about other topics that are extremely important as well. And this is just uh the beginning of a, a, a very, a new era where this commission is gonna listen and do a, uh, react to what you need. It's not what you want. Basically, in these cases, it's a, it's a human need. So thank you so much for being here and thank you for all the audience for being here. And we're gonna be listening to all your concerns and just like the mayor wrote down, all those three things that you, that you wanted are, are perfect. And maybe, maybe here with the city, city manager, he can come up with a, a, a letter also to the school district. Because yeah, a campaign to inform and uh teach the, the kids about the importance of, of animal control and taking care of those, those animals. I mean, that's where they learn everything, that's cool. So I really like that idea as well.
And, and, um, but I, um, it, it can be possible because a, as a former teacher, we've had, you know, uh workshops, not workshops, but you know, they bring in services to the school, to the school and to some, to the P, to the P department. They have, uh, they have awareness of, let's say, for example, in this case would be uh dogs. You know, they would have, they would bring kennels with puppies and literature and stuff. And every class from kinder to, let's say, to sixth grade would come, like go to, to P, they would go ahead and, 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 and they don't know, they're awareness of this. So it can be done to the, to the school.
Yes, the, the city, the city uh has several important events throughout the year and we can definitely maybe incorporate one of those awareness into the events where, where we can, right? Uh, that could be another uh way to promote these educational uh, uh information to these, to these uh kids and to the public. So again, thank you so much and everything you said was perfect and again, my hat off to you.
In closing, you know, I'm, I'm at the bottom of the total. You know, I, uh, the people that really, really do need credit is people like Claudia, Claudia Campbell. You know, she was, I mean, as a teacher, she's at the very back over there, as, as a teacher and as a, as a family member. I mean, she was the one that brought awareness first to us. And also we have Norma, the other person that is also a big advocate for dogs. We have Veronica and Yaya and Anna, you know, we have a handful, a handful of people and they're the ones that, that deserve credit. You know, I'm at the bottom, but, but I'm glad they were able to hear us out and, and we'll be anxiously waiting for something to happen from, from the city.
Yes, and this is, this is the building that we're talking about, ma'am. And as you can see, it's got, uh, we think that it's, uh, the location is more suitable for, for this particular purpose because it's got more parking, it's got, it's a much larger, larger area. You can see that, that I, I can definitely see this place being our, our city kennel and flourish and be able to address a lot of the needs that, that you just raised, uh, on the territory.
Okay, how long will it take for that to get over Rio Grande?
One of the issues that we have is that we need to get that building inspected and see how effective is the structure that it's got currently. Uh, but one of the things, just as the commissioner was saying, if, if that particular project is gonna take too long, okay, we could allocate some of the funds that we have to start uh offering services, you know? So we allocated this particular money, right? And if it's gonna take us two years, year and a half to even start working on this, well, like I said, we wanna address something this year. We wanna address the issues currently, so we have money, so we could start doing some of the services perhaps. Uh, so that we don't have to wait and then offer the services. We could start trying to work something out. But this is the purpose of, of this meeting, so that we can get informed as well as to what are the necessities that you have.
And you know, uh, Mr. Mayor, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can always ask, you know, other cities how, what they did, you know? I mean, I'm sure that we have a grant writer.
Yes.
You know, the grant writer can go in and explore things like, you know, trying to find a, a grant to help, you know, this situation. You know, I, we can go, I, I was very impressed with the animal shelter out there in the Rio Grande, Texas. You know, it's huge, first things, it's huge. But they have a person that is in charge of, of the dogs and of course, their personal staff. But this person, she's in charge of sending those dogs to, I mean, outstate. And that's also she's in charge of, and it's run pretty well. So, I mean, we can get ideas from other people instead of us trying to reinvent the wheel, which we don't have to.
And, and the reason that, that you might see that this is coming off as if we're trying to reinvent the wheel, I'll tell you this. We have looked into the possibilities of grants, okay? Though grants take a very long time, we might not even have anything done within the next two, three, four years if we wait for a grant. Okay, to receive, to be able to apply that. Yes, we're looking for that, we're trying to address that, but every grant takes a very long time and they're very complicated. And what we wanted to do is, you know what, we don't have the power of a grant right now. We don't have the money to do a, a, a phenomenon facility, but we do have some funds that we can utilize right now. It's not ideal, but at least we're addressing the concern as, as, as much as we can. So that's why we have some resources, we're not buying new land, we're using what we have. We're gonna try to restore it, we're gonna try to use some of the money to bring it back. We're not foregoing the possibility of having something state-of-the-art uh facility that's gonna be phenomenal, you know? But, but that's gonna take, that's gonna take years. Uh, but, but, but we're gonna start, we're gonna start, we have to start at some point, right? So, and I think it's the best thing to do is to start right now, start addressing it with as much or as little as we have and then progress it, right? But I think that addressing it, addressing the issue is the first start, the first step, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We do, we have purchased fifty kennels already, am I correct?
That works.
Pardon?
Yes, sir.
And we have those kennels, all we need now is the, the.
We just need the location, please.
And we have, we have had rabies clinics the last two Aprils with a hundred vouchers. That, that may have been the, the confusion. The vouchers were for, were for rabies vaccine, right? They were not for.
Correct. Uh, back in June of twenty twenty-three, we had our first clinic and we teamed up with Dr. Rodrigo in the staff.
In April also?
Yeah, that one was a total of ninety-nine uh rabies shots that were issued out. And I wanna say April of this year, uh, was a hundred and one that we issued out. But of course, we did give out uh two people that lived with insights to do it.
Yes, okay, thank you. Good afternoon, ma'am.
My name is Norma Lopez. I'm a citizen of Rio Grande City. I'm a military war veteran, I'm a federal government retiree, and I'm a local volunteer. I am an animal advocate. Uh, I want people to do some help because it's not necessary, you shouldn't be doing it. So I wanna touch a little bit about what Cindy said and I, I, what I, this is just me. Two or three spanners a year, it's not even gonna cut it. We have a big problem. And you know what I've seen? I've been rescuing dogs since I told my husband. There's dogs in every business. I could have between twenty and sixty dollars. I own zero dogs. They all belong to the community. I rescue them full of fleas ticks, full of mange, almost dead. People just turn over their dogs like it's a shirt that they're giving. And um, I think, my opinion, is that we need to, like Texas A and M has a school of vets. If you pay their lodging and a master vet or however they work it, I feel like we need to do a big event. Because people wanna spay and neuter their dogs. I have a webpage where people message me constantly. And people are terrified of the leadership in this community. And my hat's off for you for having this because five years ago, I sat right on that chair and talked to the last mayor and nothing ever happened. You know, it was just a joke for him, you know, he just, it didn't matter. And I told him the problem we had, I was tired of picking up dogs, five years ago. And today, I'm still picking up dogs. Just yesterday, I saw a lady throwing a cat out her window, like it was a cat, a kitty, a little kitten. I had to take him home. I don't have kittens because I have so many dogs, so I don't really have kittens. But I think that, my opinion is that the kennels where they're at right now is a perfect place for the dogs because they're on a hill and they get the wind, that's my opinion. Why do we have to put them in another facility? They need bigger kennels. Collecting dogs is just gonna make it harder for rescues to move them unless you wanna kill them. You're collecting dogs, so what are you gonna do with it? The rescues are killing themselves trying to move these dogs out of Stark County, you know? And, and it's very emotionally draining. Uh, sometimes, and I'm just gonna say things because Gilbert knows me, does know me for years. I'll tell you things right out. We were trying to rescue a five-pound chihuahua from the kennels, what, about five or six months ago? And the kennel worker said, I'm gonna kill that dog because I don't like it. Well, these dogs already come abused, they're scared when they get to the kennels. So saying if they don't act right, I'm just gonna kill him, is not the right answer. Because they're already coming abused and mistreated from the community. These dogs are scared. You're talking about a five-pound chihuahua and your kennel worker left a message to one of the rescues, a voice message. I do what I want, not even Joey Solis or the mayor or nobody tells me what to do and I'm killing that dog because I don't like it. And that's not the right attitude how you talk to the taxpayers. If a rescue is willing to rehabilitate that dog, you let that dog go to a rescue because we're not controlling the problem. I feel like, and I'm just gonna say it, with me, sir, you're gonna hear the truth. I feel like the police department has a lot to do with everything that's going on. I have been criminally trespassed from a public parking space. I've gone to people's houses to try to, like last week and the week before, I was trying to help a family. There was a husky, that animal had been controlled, had been called several times in a hundred and ten degree temperatures and direct sun. Now, if you know the laws, the Safe Outdoor Dog Act, you're gonna cite that person or give them a warning, you cannot have that dog there. I got criminally trespassed, I, I was waiting for the wife because the husband told me, wait here, my wife is on her way. So when the wife showed up, you know, people start, that's my dog, what do you care? Why do you care about the dog? And a bus was left in my truck. So when the police show up, I get criminally trespassed, the dog stays there, nothing happens to it, like the dog. There's no law enforcement in this community. The police said, I told them, look, there's a dog across the street, in the other street, with a big chain on him. And according to the Texas law, you can't dictate from the Texas law, say, you're no enforcement, you're no enforcement per every law. You can't just pick and choose what laws you want and force. I told them, there's a dog on the other street, has a big chain, he's been like that for two years. They went over there the next day, was on my way to talk to Mr. Solis about the issue because here I have another criminal trespass in my record because they keep criminally trespassing me for trying to help dogs. I was criminally trespassed, I'm on a public place, you can't be here, there's a lot of businesses there. The dog's fur was like a, a hundred feet from there and the girl didn't want the dog rescued. The dog is still at the dollar tree, getting pregnant every six months. One unaltered female can produce sixty-seven thousand dollars in their lifetime. Do you think about that number and how many dogs we have in this community? An abuser, an abusive block walking, when you were running for office? I had my attorney tell me the other day, Norma, we were block walking. I had my attorney tell me the other day, Norma, we were block walking, I saw some French chain. My heart, I just wanted to say something that quickly. There's a problem with our community and it has a lot to do with law enforcement. There's no leadership there. The, the police wanna, they just, you know, a, a girl called and she recorded the conversation. The police said, "If the police wants to criminal trespass her, then keep criminal trespass her." No, you criminal trespass because it is the law. You can't just, you're not making laws, you're enforcing the laws. And my opinion is that this is a problem. They need to enforce, start enforcing the laws. There's city ordinances, we have leash laws in this community, we don't enforce it. We didn't, we're not enforcing the laws, we're going, yeah, I guess the, the police should have leadership and at this point I think they don't. I don't blame them, I blame leadership. So I think that, um, there's a lot of things you can fix right now, if you really wanna fix the problem. Enforce the laws that you already have in the books. You know, cite people that are not, you know, abiding by the laws, period. The problem in this community is that people know they're gonna get away. Like that girl had that husky in a hundred and ten degree temperatures in the direct sun. She's gonna go tell her homonym and everybody that I get, I get this criminal trespass, but the dog stays there. Yet the lady said, "Animal control has been on here many times."
And one of the things that I would like to say, that obviously I don't wanna encourage you or anybody else to be committing, uh, the trespassing if, if somebody's not welcome, right? But I think that you're right. You should be able to be working stand in public land. You know, where, where, where you can be and pick up the phone and say, I think that there is a, a concern that needs to be addressed without having to, to, uh, be charged for trespassing, you know? Yes, obviously, it's, 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 uh, you're not trespassing until somebody tells you, "Hey, don't, don't come in, you're not welcome anymore."
Well, I was standing at her door because she, the guy told me, "Stay here, I wanna move the dog if I know that she's not going there." So stay here until my wife gets here. So when the wife got there, she didn't wanna get with her dog, so I left in my truck, I was on the street. So how did I criminal trespass? I knocked on the door, he never told me to leave, he told me wait for my wife. So you're just making up the laws as you go. You can't criminally trespass me if it's of, of the law, in the law, but we don't know the law. Now, the dog that was on the chain, there's a law, you can't have a dog on the chain. Why does that guy get away with having his dog on the chain and everybody else around him? You know, that's the problem, one problem. Another one, I feel like if people wanna breed dogs, they should, uh, the city should issue them a license. You know, a, a permit. To, to disencourage breeding because at this point we have too many dogs and they're everywhere. And cats too. I, I feel like that's another issue, um. To, I feel like we can add that to the city ordinance, say, "If you wanna be a breeder, okay, you need to pay a license or a permit fee or whatever." Find people, there's other municipalities that find people. When they just are having litter after litter to go turn them over to animal control. And so now you have rescues struggling to try to move the dogs out of animal control. Because these people are irresponsibly breeding their dogs, just letting them breed and then just going to turn them into the city. And what happens with the dogs? We don't know. So that's just the way I feel, I'm not trying to be mean to anybody, I'm just saying the experiences, I've had some really bad experiences. I feel like the law's always against, you know, e- even taking, picking up like the dog, she's still at the, the dollar train. But the girl there was complaining because she didn't want me to take the dog. And the dog is having a litter every six months. And right now there's two dogs there. You know? So, I mean, to touch up what Cindy said, it's, it's a very hard, daunting, financially draining job. People wanna spanieter here, I have a lot of people message me, um. I used to take people's dogs to spanieter in Mexico. I haven't been doing it, but people message me, "Hey, I wanna breed dogs." But it's a lot for me. If we can have the events here, that would, I think that would really help us control the problem.
Mr. Norman, you, you said that, uh, two or three times is not enough, how many times?
Definitely. This is just my opinion, I love Cindy, she's my assistant rescue.
Yes.
Uh, I've been rescuing dogs for like seven years now, um. Because remember, one unaltered female and her ancestors can have sixty-seven thousand dollars. So you're, you're animal control speaking of one dog, but there's a hundred dogs being born.
Yes.
So spanieter, my opinion is that spanieter needs to be the focus.
Okay.
My opinion is that to expand where the dogs are at now, right now, because it's about the dogs that have to be there. Why? Because they would be responsibly bred or turned over to animal control, it's not their fault. You know, uh, I think their kennels are too small. Um, but expanding, my opinion, that area would be a good thing. Now, if you open a facility, I think spanieter is a great thing. Will we have a vet to spanieter? I think if you pay them money, talks and they'll come and do it. I think that when they do it, they need to do it probably for a month, every day. Have people maybe picking up people's dogs and taking them or people bringing them. I think putting a big dent on the problem will help because people do wanna spanieter.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah.
All right, so just to recap on the things that I think you just told us, I think that the most prominent are three issues. Uh, and one is obviously law enforcement, uh, animal laws and obviously our city ordinances. I think that's one of the issues that you mentioned, obviously just fine last year. Your presentation was saying that you needed more, uh, clinics for vaccinations and also for spanieter. And I think the last one is perhaps looking to, to see if, uh, we can require citizens to, to request a breathing permit or force them to get a breathing permit.
Yep.
Uh, and I think in a nutshell, those are the things that, that you just addressed and made points, right?
Because when you have, you don't have structure, there's no law enforcement, there's no enforcement. You know, everybody's just going whatever they want, the dog, wherever people are leading them wrong. The dogs are paying the price because then law enforcement goes, "Well, if they're near talking, they killed the chicken, then killed the dog." But then it's not the dog's fault that he's roaming because we're not enforcing the leash laws.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Well, thank you so much for your time, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
And just to, oh. Did you know, Ms. Norma, I, I don't think we're closing that other location, we're not gonna close it. At least it's gonna be an expansion of what we already have. And we're gonna take a look at those kennels to see if they need bigger ones. And, uh, just so you know, uh, thank you for letting us know that. And also, I wanna thank, uh, Joey and your officers for helping, uh, I, I, I know that of bigger cities, the police department don't have that in their department because it's just too much. They, they, they are too busy giving security to, to the, to the citizens and, uh, I'm pretty sure they, they do their best, so thank you so much. And that's something that we also wanted to address with them and, and have a conversation, maybe they have better ideas, maybe they need more officers on that. Or maybe they, they feel that the, this, uh, commission needs to come up with another department just for animal control, it's too big. Based on what you're telling me, maybe it's, it's time to move up and, and, uh, come up with something bigger. Because we, we honestly wanna help with this situation. It's getting out of control and this is just two, two concerned citizens that are speaking right now. So imagine the race that couldn't, couldn't make it today or didn't know that this was happening. But this is gonna happen more often so that we can come up with something good. And I can guarantee you that this commission will come up with a great plan that is gonna be sustainable. And it's gonna be, uh, helping and, uh, pretty much having, uh, the results that every city wants, you know? Not, not to have these problems. So, uh, Mr. Joey, I don't know if you wanna, uh, just tell us a little bit about what the, your department does for, for, for the animal control? And any ideas that you may have that might help, uh, with this animal control problem?
Well, the animal control falls under the police department. Uh, we have two, uh, animal control officers that are fully certified. Uh, we do have two officers that oversees, uh, our two animal controls. Uh, what we do want for the future, and I was talking to our interim city manager, Mr. Bilan, is add an officer assigned specifically to animal control to investigate any, uh, animal protein cases. Any cases that need to be, uh, investigated for the simple reasons, sometimes they see police, it's a little bit more intimidating.
Also, like an investigator, specifically for animal control, is what you're suggesting?
Correct, but the issue, of course, is we cannot pull a patrol officer or an investigator off without replacing. Because by filling in the void that we have in animal control, now we leave a void within our department with less manpower. So of course, adding more manpower. Uh, I know for a fact if we do expand our kennels, uh, our animal control officers are gonna need some help. Uh, so adding more personnel. Uh, the other thing that we spoke about was maybe having animal control as its own department, with its own director, uh, with own staff. Uh, because it is a full-time job, animal law enforcement. We do have our animal control under us because we call them out, you know, there's a dog bite at seven, eight, nine o'clock at night, they come out. Uh, so there are some issues that we do wanna sit down with our commission. And hopefully in the future, expand what we need to do to better, uh, serve our community.
We can definitely do that, um. And one of the things I wanted to join on what Commissioner Barrera was saying, that, uh, I think that we have great personnel, great officers at our law enforcement department, our police department. I think that they all are trying to do their very best, uh, to provide safety. Uh, I've worked with many police officers in the past. And I know from personal experience that being a police officer is definitely not an easy job. At any point, you're risking your life, you're, you're putting yourself in danger for the community. Uh, and that's definitely not easy, especially for the people that are out there patrolling, uh, and addressing a lot of the safety issues. Uh, I know it's, it's very difficult and challenging. Uh, but I think that, that today, we have a good start where we can hear the needs of, of the concerned citizens and also sit down with our police department leadership and, and try to brainstorm to come up with, uh, some, some ideas as to how to provide a better service for our community. Uh, but I joined with Mr., with Commissioner Barrera and thank you so much to our, uh, law enforcement officers. I think that you guys are doing a, a good job, uh, and this leadership is not gonna, not gonna allow you to, to, to fail. Because we're gonna try to assist every police officer and we're gonna try to address the needs of our concerned citizens as well.
So, uh, can I talk to one of the, the animal control officers? Hello, sir.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Mr. Thank you so much for, for being here and we, we know it's a very tough job that you have. Now, let me ask you, uh, a question, sir. Uh, how, how, you, there's only two officers, right?
Yes, sir.
In your department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, since when? Ever since you started, is that something?
Ever since I started, yes, ever since I started November the second, uh, twenty twenty-two, there's only been two.
Okay, just, just thinking, uh, thinking here is like, okay, our community is growing, everything is growing, it's, uh, your department is not growing.
Yes.
Right? That doesn't make any sense, it's just, uh, a case where it's a one plus one thing, right? So, in your opinion, sir, let's go, uh, straight forward, move forward. In your opinion, how many more officers do you think you need in the department in order to fulfill the needs of this community?
So since there are only two officers for the entire city, from Rio de Janeiro to the city, right? We can do another two officers, two officers for the west side and two officers for the east side, right? Um, and right now, the amount of cages that we have is only seven plus three quarantine, right? The quarantine cages have to be empty unless there's anything, or there's mishaps, dog bites, something like that. Uh, the seven other cages are for just, uh, regular calls. Um, because of that, we run into a problem where the amount of calls we get supersede the amount of kennels we have, right? So, uh, and that why we remain with two officers only.
Okay.
Um, if we do do an expansion, let's say up to thirty kennels, right? Then it'll be a more helpful for more personnel for it having that, right? Um, again, for more, more kennels, right, that would increase the amount of calls that we can go to. You, let's say for every one kennel that we add, that's another call that we go to. So thirty kennels equals thirty more calls, right? Uh, the problem that we also find ourselves in is the whole forty period we have for the dogs. We always have to wait three, uh, three days, right, in order for the dog has an owner. And it's a stray dog, we have to wait that the owner is present. Uh, if no owner is present, then we wait for the full ten, fifteen days, right? Uh, that's where the issue lies. We have to wait too long, right, for the dog to be, uh, adopted, right? After the fifteen days, we have to proceed with the procedures of utilization, right? Um, but the problem is the time. If we reduce that amount of time, right, with the amount of kennels we have right now, then we can reduce the cost. We can proceed with the procedure, right, that might sound a little bit bad. But, you know, at least we have a growing dog problem, growing cat problem in the city, so that's my interpretation.
Okay, two officers plus the investigator that Mr....
Yes, yes, sir.
So three total.
Yes, it's, was it two for the east, two for the west, or was it just two?
Just two extra, uh, two extra.
Two extra, that way, the third two, they go to the east and the other two go to the west, plus the...
Oh, I see, yes.
Okay.
What does it mean like if you're certified, what does that mean?
So you go to the class, it's three-day course, seventy-two hours, right? Uh, you go, you, uh, go through a book, that book explains the laws, the procedures, you know, that how to catch your dog, how to identify dogs, how to identify cats. You go to that thirty-hour course, it goes all over, um, the fifty, it's a hundred-question test, fifty for laws and fifty for descriptions and other stuff.
So you don't have to be certified to get hired, you just need to get certified once you're hired, am I correct?
Yes, you're right, yes.
Okay, well, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, my... We'll take your words into consideration.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you say we're required to be certified with a certain amount of time?
Okay. Do we have another member from the public?
Anybody else?
Claudia?
Interested in...
I think that we have, we have addressed a lot of the concerns, but...
First, we have Barrera in Spanish.
Okay.
Um, I'm a scientist, I'm a scientist, I'm a... Muchas de las cosas que hacen esto posible y normal, pero... I think I think that we have to start from the community. The community, they're gonna have dogs. Why? Because they know that they're not gonna do nothing. Because if someone says, "Oh, yes, I'm gonna kill my dog," well, sometimes the police, I don't know, they'll... You know, they don't take the case of, "Ah, we're gonna have to find out who did it." So that's why I think that the people, wherever they are, they're gonna kill their dogs. Eh, otra cosa. Las, los eventos de adopción que se hacen en la perrera que... Well, they're gonna help them to get a dog, to get a dog, and not kill them. Pero la comunidad no es responsable. Hace como, ¿qué se llama? Two veces, se hizo un evento en Tacos Flight. Y fueron a devolver una, una de las personas que, que vio adoptar un perrito, luego fueron a devolver a la perrera. Que porque tenía una condición, la condición que tenía el perrito era que tenía concaso. Entonces, ¿cuál es el, el? Le ponía a hacer un evento de adopción, si la comunidad va a ir a regresar el perro, no, no, no te pide nada como hacen los eventos, como... Tienes que ir a la operar, o sea, nada. Después, he tocado, he visto casos, sí, de igual, o sea, adoptar el perro y luego, "Yes, I'm gonna kill my dog." Este perro, lo sacaron de la perrera, o sea, alguien lo adoptó. Entonces... Sí, estaba bien en la perrera, sí, pero también tiene que haber un control porque la gente... Si así, la gente va a ir con los perros ahí, saben que los van a matar. Porque pues saben también que uno como voluntaria, porque somos voluntarios, tratamos de sacarlos de algún hogar. Entonces, pues la gente está como chiflada, y que van y dejan el perro y, y... Como si hacen una perrera más grande, ¿a dónde van ahí todos esos perros? Nosotros no podemos sacarlos a todos. Ahí te dan tiempo, ¿sabes qué? Dos semanas, el perro ya tiene un mes aquí. Y afán, mira, esas otras como Claudia, tenemos que sacar el perro, como hacemos porque no lo mantén y esto y lo otro y...
¿Qué sería tu sugerencia? Consentizar a la comunidad para que, para que tenga...
Sí, hace falta mucho educación.
Educación sobre el tema y, y tener un control cuando van y lo adopten. De, de checar licencia, quién va, quién no...
Claro, si se, se hagan un punto responsables, se hagan consciente de que hoy no nos vamos... Claro que sí, se hagan junto responsables, ya han procesado de que, oye, no nos vamos a quiera ganar el perro y, y.
Creo que ahí de una de las cosas que estaba diciendo el oficial, es de que, a lo mejor necesitamos un investigador. Ese sería posiblemente uno de los casos, uno de los que.
Estos, que trabajan en la perrera, tampoco tienen como, bueno, yo he visto que tengan como el mueble adecuado, unas trojas, con caca abierta y el perro, pues ahí van a hablar, en el calorón, se acercaba el caliente. Entonces, ellos tampoco, ellos también más necesitan la ayuda. Todo se me hace muy, muy poquito para mí. Y eso que no entran a la loma, no entran a los, al gano de los civiles.
Sí.
Entonces, eso también necesitan como que se haga un trabajo de tiempo completo.
Sí, pero como les comentamos, este, vamos a tratar de trabajar con los comisionados del FONDA para ver si pueden ofrecer.
Eso también, pues yo, yo vivo en la loma.
Sí.
Cuando se han hecho los eventos esos de, de rabia y eso, pues la loma no, porque no es muy de la zona.
Y desafortunadamente.
Tienes que pagar antes de que se caiga, pero igual.
Desafortunadamente, qué quisieran, qué más quisiéramos dar el servicio a todo, a toda la comunidad. Pero solamente podemos tener control de lo que está dentro de la ciudad. Obviamente, ahí es donde viene el liderazgo, en tratar de trabajar junto con los comisionados del FONDA y a lo mejor.
O sea, que ellos también se supresten.
Sí, porque tuviéramos que trabajar con ellos porque solos, independientemente, pues nada más llegamos a esta moción toral y ya no podemos continuar después de ello. Pero, pues obvio, aquí estamos siguiendo las recomendaciones suyas también de la educación y también, este, de las adopciones que se hagan malos como sabré.
Sí, de las adopciones, o sea, son, alguien que, además van a pensar en el perro y.
Sí, pero a lo mejor en el futuro, si llegamos a tener un investigador, él puede procesar esas aplicaciones y ver si el perro fue el, el que la persona adoptó o fue lo motivo para.
No, 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 no es posible que ahora nosotros tenemos a que sacar todos de aquí, por un estado, una vez en la, en ese caso. La hora de que la gente esté reproduciendo y reproduciendo, pero si van a la, van a dar a la perrera, luego los vuelven a sacar, pero luego otra vez van a la calle, otra vez vuelve a la perrera, si se necesita.
Hay muchas maneras de hacerlo.
Educación y sí, que la gente sepa que, que debe de haber como.
Consecuencias.
Sin consecuencias, entonces la gente lo hace, porque pues saben bien que no hay consecuencia alguna. Si la hay, pues es, bueno, no, no la hay, realmente no, no la hacen mal. Es como cuando también hablas, hay un perro amarrado, oye, es un perro amarrado. Las personas que así me hablan, no, no, este perro, ahora lo igual a la policía. Entonces, la policía lo que dice, el perro tiene agua en la sombra, no, pues sí, ah, entonces vamos a ver. Pero no puede ser un perro amarrado en una sombrita de un arbolito con una, o sea, no, eso también.
Bueno, lo revisaremos con esto del departamento, pero muchas gracias por estar el día de hoy.
Ya, gracias.
Thank you so much. ¿Hay otra cosa?
Esto.
Gracias. Who's, uh? Claudia, over.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hello, Claudia. Thank you so much.
I started helping, uh, animal shelter in the city.
Your name, sorry.
Claudia, yes.
Claudia, Miss P. I missed her, I'm sorry.
Ten years ago. So, I am, um, I am a volunteer in the community.
Yes, ma'am.
And first of all, I would like to thank Mr. Milan, I've worked with her, with him before, with Vez, with the amazing, uh, River City Police Department. Because I always, when we have a, a problem or concern, I go to them and they're all, their, their doors are always open, they're always working with us. When we created, so you can understand what we do, we created this network in, throughout the United States and Canada, of the dogs that we help. So, let's say, uh, the amazing officers, they, I work with them tremendously too. I cannot thank them enough for all the time, because sometimes they need the space and they told me, Claudia, the dogs need to get out, like Vera was saying. And I'm like, can you please hold them for another day, please? And they, they asked us from the line of whoever's in charge or, I texted you, right, uh, Chief Solis, and he says, yes. So, uh, this network, what we do is get dogs through, we send them throughout the United States to rescue us. That's what we do. That's what they mean when we say we can get them, okay? Um, but we need help with Spain because we already were, we're about to quit. We, we've been asking the city for years, I've been doing this for ten years.
Yes, ma'am.
And we just need help with Spain, and that's my main.
We're gonna be investing in concern, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have other ideas?
Thank you, thank you. I think we could keep rescuing, we can take dogs to our house, we can give transphorine, but if we don't get help, because we can do so much.
Right. Thank you so much for everything that you.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm guessing there's a lot of more volunteers, right, in, in the community, uh, that are also take care of these animal control problem or not?
Yes.
Are you like the main ones or there's more that you know that maybe couldn't come, we can also?
They all have fosters, right? Like you have, a lot of people have fosters.
I work there with animal control, with the city.
And they have a group that they send the dogs to, with.
We have birds throughout the United States and Canada that will take dogs with them.
Ms. Claudia, just, just so you know that I, my, I, I will, I, I really feel what you guys are expressing. So, not, I'm not speaking as a commissioner, I'm speaking as just citizen, Adiel Barreira. And, uh, I would like to join your, your efforts. And I'll be calling you, I, I would like to participate in helping you. Uh, I'll be donating something for, for your association and, and we can work together, definitely.
I'm a high school teacher, so I really, I, I really like to involve my students too. That's why when we get a doctor, we say, oh, it's an amazing, you know, event to, to involve the community, you know?
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, just wanted to let you know that we have twenty more minutes left of this meeting. So if anybody has any concerns or wants to voice some ideas, please, uh, come forward.
Dr. Margot, we would like to, here's say a few words.
Just, I'm telling that, uh, I'm glad you all are doing this, that very, very good, really good. Because, uh, I've been at it for fifty-five years, so I'm on my way out. And, uh, there's a, I have a vet area from my casa that works twice a week, all day. And there's another graduated and another student graduated in May from, uh, Alto Bonito. She's a local and she wants to stay in Rio Grande City at, at my, at my training. She wants to work there. Well, in fact, she, she, I wish she would just take over.
What's her name?
I've, I've, I've done enough already. And, uh, all this that they're talking about is correct. I mean, there's, uh, man, a lot of work that needs to be done. And, uh, and I'll help, we'll help dogs also, as much as we can. But, uh, it's, it's a huge monkey's job, really true. Where is that building that, uh?
In his Garcia's.
Huh?
That's the Old Water District, uh, that's the one.
The old one?
The Old Water District, on Claudia Garcia and eighty-three.
Ah, okay. So, I appreciate your concern and that it, it needed, okay?
Thank you so much, ma'am, and may you bring us, uh, the commission. Do we have anybody else?
Uh, real quick, Mary.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for those that don't know me, I'll introduce myself, uh, after the meeting. Uh, I wanted to thank Claudia, uh, she's helped us out a lot. And I know Claudia has, um, most of y'all have helped her out, but my point of contact is always given with Claudia. Uh, for those that don't know me, our doors are always open. If you have a concern, come sit down, talk to us. Uh, you know, I've met with Claudia a number of times, spoken with her on the weekends when there's an issue. So if we can solve the issue, uh, we're there to help you guys out. So I'll give you guys my business card when the meeting is over. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, and I think that we have heard from all the interested persons. Uh, and if there's nobody else that wants to come forward, uh, we're gonna be adjourned at the meeting.
Just be patient with us, everything takes in increments, you know? We, we know what we want to accomplish, we know what you want us to accomplish. But it's, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna have to be gradual process, but we're gonna take steps to go in that direction.
I'd like to show some slides in the future to answer that particular bill.
Yes, sir.
But let me, let me begin by thanking you all and, and I mean, uh, let me start by saying that nineteen years that I've worked for the city, this is the first time ever we have a town hall meeting for animal control, so kudos to the commission, the mayor here. And I also like to recognize Claudia, work, personally worked with Claudia for over ten years. You say ten, I think it's a little more than that, Ms. Claudia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's more than that. Ms. Vez, maybe you know, but I think it's more than that, but anyways, thank you for all you do. Mari here, uh, Ms., uh, forget the names, uh, Ms. Norma, Veronica, este, thanks for all you do, thanks for being here. Again, uh, we're here to listen. And just to, to show you what the plan is, this is a facility that is currently what's currently the, uh, I mean, was formerly the Old Water District. Now, this particular place right now is being used as a storage, a substandard. Uh, we're gonna, wanna fix it. And we're gonna use it in addition to the existing kennels. They're not leaving the commission, they're gonna be used also. So, these are, these are the plans. Uh, organization, we can talk about funding, location, the design. You're gonna have.
You wanna expand it?
Yeah. Let me see. You need to press this slideshow, there.
There we go.
On the top? Okay. Oh, okay. So, there's some of the ideas for the existing building and, uh, like the mayor said, we need to, first of all, confirm that the building is suitable because we have, we have state inspectors checking those buildings. And if not, it'll be replaced, uh, for the safety, not only of, uh, the workers, the pets, but also the public. So, some of the organizations we had previously had. Some of the allocated funding, you know, maybe demolishing the front part of the old water department, remove debris. Purchase a building or build it, add kennels, add improvements, lighting. That's the site right there. Maybe a building of that, uh, shape or nature, it depends on what, what we can construct. And also, they, they, I think, once again, the state has to pre-approve this, this type of designs. Gonna have bathroom, storage, you know, missing in bed, office clinic, lobby, meeting before the entrance. And shelter. And we have Dr. Margot here. And I don't know if Dr. Margot, we are considering naming after Dr. Margot, for, uh, for Dr. Margot for many, many years.
This is one of the ideas that has been brought to us, uh, some of our community members to consider your name for, for the building. And I don't think that any of us is gonna have an objection, so.
Absolutely.
So I think that, that we're gonna name it after you if it's okay with you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm a big surprise right now.
Just to let you know, we've worked with you also, Dr. Margot, for many, many years. You've helped us with the babies' clinics. Always been available. I know it's, it's hard, it's, those of us who know, it's really, really hard to get a veterinarian in this area to, to help us with those vaccinations. Mr. Barreira, I don't know if you'd like to lighten this up?
Yeah, this is just a little background on Dr. Margot. You, as you've heard, he's done a lot since the nineteen sixties. So we thank you, Dr. Margot, for all your service as a veterinarian and as a veteran.
A veteran, veteran, uh, veteran day.
Yes.
Yeah, some of the topics we're eventually gonna touch because like the mayor said, this is just one of the meetings we're gonna have. It's to go on like, you know, Monday to Friday, the hours, you know, Saturday, volunteers, pet adoption days, uh, donation drives, pet of the week, we're gonna, we're gonna start that also. And, uh, obviously make room for, for volunteers to, to help us with this new venture. And I think that's all I have for the presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that's gonna complete today's meeting. Thank you so much for coming over. And, uh, the purpose of, of today was to inform the community that we're trying to be as proactive as we can. And while at the same time trying to listen to everybody's concerns. Uh, Commissioner Barreira was correct that we're gonna be hosting these meetings, uh, for different purposes. Community members that we bump into, some of our local restaurants, HDB, Walmart, they stop us, they address some of their concerns. And, and once we start listening that something is, is starting to surface, we wanna make sure that we address it collectively and, and obviously formally, so that everybody can have a voice and that we can respond to, to the concerns of the citizens. But we're trying to be very proactive and as you can see, we have allocated some funds. We still have a lot of work to do, but I think that we're going in the right, right direction. And, uh, thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you.